I'd like to ask you all if you have a cellphone, would you please either turn it off or turn it down? And if you need to make a phone call, would you please step out in the lobby? With that, I'd like to get approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Approval of reading the proposed ordinance and resolutions by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. There's no presentations. I'd like to open it up for the first round of comments from citizens of choice, on subject of choice. Anyone from the audience like to speak up? You have another chance at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, we'll go ahead. None, no committee reports. Public hearings and ordinances, ordinance thirteen fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading of ordinance thirteen fifteen, an ordinance of the City of Alachua, Florida relating to the amendment of the city's land development regulations, amending Article 10 definitions, Section 10.2 by amending the following definitions: massage parlors, sex shops, sexual conduct, sexually explicit media, sexually oriented business, sexually oriented cabaret or sex-oriented cabaret, sexually oriented cinema, sexually oriented motion picture theater, or sex-oriented cinema, sexually oriented media store, and sexually oriented toys or novelties, and by adding the following definitions: bathhouse, massage therapist, and vertical display area gross, providing severability and providing an effective date. This is a reading, the first reading of ordinance thirteen fifteen of the City of Alachua by title only.
Ms. Winburne.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, Madam City Manager, Madam City Attorney. I'm Kathy Winburne, Planning Director for the City. City staff is updating the city's sexually oriented business ordinance contained within the land development regulations and recommends clarification of certain definitions in Article 10, Section 10.2, in order to ensure that the regulations are in conformance with the First Amendment protection afforded to sexually oriented businesses. Additionally, legal rulings involving such businesses and uses can result in changes to how these types of uses should be regulated and defined. A joint workshop of the City Commission and Planning and Zoning Board was held on October 7th, 2013, to discuss the proposed amendments. All of the members of the City Commission and the Planning and Zoning Board were in attendance at the October 7th, 2013 workshop. During the workshop, testimony was provided by expert Dr. Eric Damian Kelly, Ph.D., FAIC P., who was retained by the city to assist the city with the technical updates to the land development regulations dealing with sexually oriented businesses. Dr. Kelly assisted with drafting the original regulations for the city in 2003. He also assisted the city in 2011 with the adoption of the city's gateway ordinance. Dr. Kelly reviewed the city's existing regulations from a planning and legal perspective and provided the proposed revisions for review and comment by staff resulting in the suggested revisions as set forth in proposed ordinance thirteen fifteen. The text of the proposed amendments are shown in a strike-through, text-to-be-removed format and underscore-for-text-to-be-added format within the proposed ordinance. The following exhibits are being submitted as part of the legislative record for this item. Exhibit one is the resume for Dr. Eric Damian Kelly. Exhibit two is the CD of the legislative record for ordinance oh four oh one, which is the city's sexually oriented business ordinance now contained in Article four of the land development regulations. This CD and the CD containing exhibit three were provided to the City Commission on approximately September 26th, 2013. Exhibit three is a CD containing six additional articles and studies regarding the impacts of sexually oriented businesses, which further quantify the adverse secondary effects of these businesses. Exhibit four is the original of the transcript of the October 7th, 2013 Joint City Commission and Planning and Zoning Board workshop. And exhibit five is the original transcript of the October 8th, 2013 Planning and Zoning Board meeting. I will submit these exhibits to the clerk after this presentation. Planning and zoning board decision, the board held a public hearing on October 8th, 2013, and found the proposed text to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and in compliance with the LDRs and voted five to zero to transmit the proposed amendments to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval. And this evening, staff's recommendation is that the City Commission approve ordinance thirteen fifteen on first reading and schedule second and final reading for November 4th, 2013. And that concludes my presentation.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Winburne? And what is your pleasure on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve ordinance thirteen fifteen on the first reading and schedule the second and final reading for November 4th, 2013.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor? We did have a workshop, what, two weeks ago before the last meeting and went over this extensively. We had a live, Mr. Kelly, Dr. Kelly, on screen, and we went over all this whole ruling and the new rules and regulations. So with that, anyone like to comment on the motion on the floor? Seeing none. Commissioners?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardaker?
Aye.
Mr. Wilford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to go to ordinance fourteen oh one on first reading. Ms. Malone.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Do you want me to go ahead and read the title?
Yes.
Thank you. This is the reading, the first reading of ordinance fourteen dash zero one, an ordinance of the City of Alachua, Florida, amending Section 2-101, parentheses two, comma, parentheses four, and parentheses seven to include genetic information. Addition of item five in Section 2-173 for inclusion of breastfeeding accommodation. Addition of Section 2-176, safe harbor provision. Addition of Section 2-177, employee rest time policy. Amending Section 2-205B, parentheses four, to include budget appropriations, amending Section 2-247C to include language on solicitation or distribution by non-employees. Addition of Section 2-249, cyber communication and social media use by employees. Addition of Section 2-250, handheld device use. Addition of Section 2-251, ethical communications procedure. Addition of Section 2-252, accommodations policy. Addition of Section 2-253, social events within the workplace. Amending Section 2-333 to include genetic information. An addition of items C in Section 2-596 to include electronic records retention, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, provided for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances. And I, how do I move this down? And the city code and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance fourteen dash oh one by title only.
Ms. Malone.
Yes, good evening. Chair Malone, Human Resources, Mayor Commissioners, Madam City Manager and Madam City Attorney, here to revise or, excuse me, make amendments to the personnel policies and procedures formerly known as Personnel Rules and Regulations adopted in August of 2004, amended in 2006, 2009, and then most recently in 2010. As detailed by the City Attorney in title, we have several areas that we've made either, you know, minor changes or actually additions of new policies. Be more than happy to go over those one at a time or if you all have a preference on how to address. Is that sufficient?
Oh, the summary?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So the first one, Section 2-101, under policy statement, and actually this falls under our equal employment. This is just to add genetic information as a protected class. Again, that was also included in harassment, which is later under two dash three through three. These are all referring back to the place in the Code of Ordinances, of course, it varies with our personnel policies and procedures manual. Section 2-173, under work break, we had to include a breastfeeding accommodation just to make sure that arrangements were made at the request of employee that needed that. Section 2-176 was a safe harbor provision. This is a newly added section at the recommendation of our employment law audit, and again, that's to maintain compliance with state and federal law. We get that once a year. He's made several recommendations. Next was our employee rest time policy. This is a new section as well. This is actually something that's been in the works for quite some time, more so for our crews that are called out during the night. You know, they'll be out three times. I'm sure everybody's had to call about power outages, things along that line. So this provides for them to come in for paid rest time. So in other words, the employee's not penalized. The next section was annually, we added language to include budget appropriations. This was more so just to, as a housekeeping issue. We have several benefits that, as you know, are still in place but have been unfunded. So this was one of those that we needed to clarify and code. Next was Section 2-245. That was actually advertised, but we did not include it. That was under uniforms. We just wanted to bring that to your attention. Let's see, this next one, I believe, solicitation distribution. Again, that was just a language revision to include non-employees as well as employees. So we don't have folks coming on the work site during work hours, things along that nature. Cyber communication and social media used by employees. This is a new policy as well. And Ms. Rush had a section that we needed to add.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, when I went over that, this, my recommendation would be to add under two dash two five oh, a new Section D that says no text messaging. This is language I just worked up here, and we would bring it back, this more specific language, but something which would say that city employees are prohibited from utilizing test messaging for city business on city issued or personal or any other devices. This is to ensure that the city complies with public records laws. It's very difficult to store text messages. And also certainly if you're, whatever you're doing, stopping, you'd have to take a picture of it and store it. It's not something that would necessarily be on, you know, the hard drives at the city and things like that. So it's my recommendation to make sure that the city does not run afoul of public records laws, that city employees not be using their phones for text messaging. We'll look into to see whether it would need to be for a public record, to see if someone could say, "I'm running late," or whatever, but it's my recommendation that we not be using it for conducting business via text message.
And you're strictly talking about personal, and should that be, that should that be in there? No personal?
No, on any, on any.
Any device.
On the city phones, on anything, that they not be using it for text, not text messaging it.
Even if it's city business?
Correct.
Okay.
Only if it's city business.
Clarification.
If it's city business, you cannot.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
Not to text any city business that would need to be held for public records retention on a personal or city phone, iPod, anything, iPad, or anything like that.
Because just like if you use.
Staff knows that, but we're just going to put it in the personnel policies.
Because even if you're using your home computer and you're using it for city business, that's still public records that need to be, and vice versa, if you're using a city computer and it's not city business, it's not a public record. What we're saying here is no text messaging, any city business on any device, city-owned or personal, you know, any device that will be, could be used for texting.
That's why too, not to interrupt, but it was actually an addition of a section in and of itself to that portion of the policy. Primarily, it was referring to using handheld devices while driving, but then it could be under any device, and that's when this was brought to our attention. So we decided to add that as a separate section on the bottom, which we'll bring back to you all for consideration.
We'll say just pass that, but as a secondary offense.
That's true, yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion would be that when we come down to voting, that we say and add a section regarding no texting, and then we will read it very specifically into the record. At the next meeting, we'll have polished the language.
Okay. Does everyone understand that? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Next, we have Section 2-251, ethical communication, sir?
Excuse me. This is a part she's talking about, but actually on page 11, it says employee is discouraged from using a cellphone in a car, blah, blah, blah. Text messaging shouldn't be in there since that's, that wouldn't be discouraged, that's forbidden because it's law now that you can't text message.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you could text if it was personal.
Not driving.
And you're not driving.
Yeah, but this says driving.
Yeah.
So text messaging shouldn't be.
They're just doing away with it altogether.
They are going to do it, even that section there?
Even standing still.
Well, no, sir, he's, Commissioner Wilford, I believe, understand what you're getting at.
And, yeah, you, Mr. Mayor, when I looked at that, I had given that a thought too, that it's not something you want anyone to do while driving. What you have to look at, and I have not looked at the law to see this, if when you are stopped, what they are defining as driving, and I will look at that between now and next reading and clarify that with the, with this board's permission.
I'm finding, Mr. Mayor, because actually you will be, you can be given a ticket for that now, so certainly it's against the law.
Right. And I think part of that is that stop, a stop at a light, they're allowed to text.
That's.
But it's still, it's just, it's going to be banned from here.
And also, notwithstanding what our policy would say, if it is a state law, the state law would also govern.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else question on that?
So we will make sure it complies with state law.
Again, I apologize not to be prepared on that one.
No, that's fine.
We'll definitely have it together next time.
That's why we're supposed to read, that's why we're supposed to read this stuff.
Yes, there you go. So next is 2-251, ethical communication procedures. Again, that's just a way of outlining how we should be handling ourselves appropriately and dealing with one another, citizens. Primarily, as I'm sure you all know, gossip, things along that line, are just poison to a workplace. So this is a way of encouraging proper protocol for handling situations like that. Next is Section 2-252, accommodations policy. Just putting in place that the city will make accommodations as needed for those following under American with Disabilities Act.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On page 13, I understand now why we would try to certainly help an employee that's has any special accommodation, but the statement says if the employee cannot perform the essential functions with the requested accommodation, the employee may be separated from the city. What condition under would they be kept if they couldn't perform the job?
Well, again, I think that's more so just language that we make sure to have in there, but ultimately, if something were to come up, perhaps that wasn't an issue when they were hired, and then something, you know, there was a life-changing event that made that an issue if they were no longer able to perform.
So you may come to try to reassign them.
Yes, sir. If they could not perform the essential functions of that job with accommodation.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Section 2-253, social events within the workplace. Again, this is just to reiterate, you know, we're all here to be together one another. We want to support camaraderie, but don't want to put it out there where only certain folks can do certain things. So if we do have social events within the workplace, they are to be extended and an invitation to everyone. And of course, on the flip side of that, no one is to feel coerced or, you know, required to participate in any city function if they don't desire, excuse me, not city function, workplace, social event. Next is, we'd already kind of touched on this briefly, but this is actually our harassment section, and again, this is where we include genetic information as a protected class. And lastly, was Section 2-596, confidentiality and acceptable system usage, and this is where it gets into computer and internet email usage, city computers, and this is just adding a section there to let you know that, you know, those records are retained in definite period with our city IT personnel department, and that it's just to make them aware that that is there and that is available, so. With that, I think we've gone over most of everything. Staff recommendation is to approve ordinance fourteen dash zero one, first ordinance of the new fiscal year, on first reading and schedule for second and final reading on November 4th. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to address them.
And that it be passed with the amendments discussed during.
And passed with the amendments discussed.
Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance fourteen oh one on first reading and schedule for second and final reading on November 4th, 2013, with the amendments that were discussed tonight.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd like to open up the public hearings. Would anyone like to comment on the motion on the floor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Tamara Robbins. On page 10, actually, it's noted, the section on page nine, the cyber communication and social media used by employees. I'm not sure if I missed something, but why is this, the use of social media allowed at work at all? I mean, isn't that, that's not part of your job description, anybody's job description, is it? And shouldn't it be limited to break time or something? I mean, I see all these cautions and, you know, respect your audience, respect the interests and willings. I mean, why would employees be spending time on social media? I don't get it. You're here to work, not socialize on the internet. The other thing is under the handheld device, and I think Commissioner Wilford, you noted on the paragraph A, I mean, first of all, there's a paragraph that says, indicates that cellphone use while driving is dangerous and may even approach the equivalent danger of driving while under the influence according to some studies. And then under paragraph A, it just says, "An employee who uses a city-supplied device or a city-supplied vehicle is discouraged from using a cellphone or similar device while driving." Why wouldn't you just say you can't use, talk on the phone while you're driving? Pull over. You know, I mean, I see police officers and everybody else driving around, talking on their phones. I mean, how, how much of an attention, and I know everybody does it, I do it. I try to limit it, but I think it's, it puts the city at risk. You state right here that it is dangerous and maybe even equivalent to driving under the influence. I don't, would never drive a work vehicle while doing it. So I think it should be not allowed while driving. If you want to pull over, that's what they suggest. That's what it is suggested, is that you need to make a phone call, you find a safe place to pull over, and you make your phone call. If you're going to allow time for people to, employees to spend time on social media, they certainly have time to pull over and make a phone call if it's that important. So I'd like to see those two items considered because I don't see why social media, anybody should be spending time at work on social media. I mean, you're getting paid to do a job. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I may address?
Sure.
Okay. I just, with regards to Ms. Robbins' comments on the social media, the intent was, she brings up a good point that I didn't even consider, but the intent was just use of social media, period. You know, it's much like going out in your off time, you know, you are representative of the city, so it's just to keep that in mind, your behaviors and your actions are reflection of the city as a whole, as an employee. Secondly, with regards to the handheld device, that was also something that was discussed. We recognize that. But ultimately, at this point, I believe the intent was that we're kind of making a step in the right direction. This is something new for us. At this point, it is not illegal. I know we brought up the discussions on text messaging as a secondary offense, but the biggest issue being folks that were, you know, on callouts and trying to get to places. If we were to prohibit it, they wouldn't even be able to do things like that while responding to city emergencies.
Something about the social media and the computers at work. I, I know mine, on my computer, you can't get on it, you know? So is that all computers in the, in the building? And laptops and all that, or so?
Are they all able to get on some of the social?
No, I mean, mine, mine, my computers are blocked.
Most of them are blocked from most social media at the city, yes.
And Mr. Mayor, I think, and this is not, I don't think, interactive social media. I think they're having times when the city has been forwarded things that have been on social media, and then city personnel have had to go on there to see and then look around at what has gone on with that specific social media. But I don't think it was them getting on to actually use social media. But there are some times that I could see them having to utilize it because they were forwarded something or directed to something that was on Facebook or on something. But as far as just getting on, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the, the city has a Facebook account, the police department has a Facebook account, so there are some computers that obviously are the ones that are inputting the information on Facebook that have access to it. Our HR department uses it because we screen employees and look at their Facebook accounts when they apply for positions, so they have to have access to it.
I know I've got emails that with, if you go here, a link, you can see what's going on. It's an official email, but you still can't, I can't do it, and I don't, I don't bother with it. So I know those come in as a regular email type thing, official business.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I know we're still in this conference, just wanted to make a response to the social media. It was my understanding, well, I just actually sat here and tried to go to Instagram, Twitter, MySpace, and Facebook and blocked, and have been blocked for years due to public record issues, being able to use it for those purposes. So it's been blocked forever, as I understand, most employees don't have it, but there are some, and to be honest, social media is a tool, and there are opportunities to spread the good word about what the City of Alachua is doing. Social media is effective in doing that. Don't think and know for a fact that employees aren't running around the City of Alachua on social media all day, and I think this was simply to address the concern of after hours when you're at home, putting things up that may not represent the City of Alachua in the best, best light. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The, I would suggest also that check with our insurance carrier, because I know with our insurance carrier where I work, if you have a provision that says no use of cellphones, it gives you additional protection. And then if an employee uses that phone, and you've had a policy that says they cannot use it while they're in a, in an agency vehicle, in our case, an agency vehicle, then it helps protect us as an organization.
Mr. Mayor, I would just encourage this Commission to leave the language the way it is, to discourage the use of cellphones and not prohibit it. We have a little bit different operation than most other companies do. We respond to emergency situations. So our crews are out trying to find where the utility's out, and sometimes they can't pull over and take these calls, or they'll never be able to respond to the emergency. The police department's in the same situation, that they're having to be on the phone or the radio with dispatch to take these calls to get to an emergency situation. And there are times that as staff, we're going to conferences or going to different places where you can't pull off the side of the turnpike or somewhere to take calls. And, you know, we've, we've got the language in there that does discourage the use of cellphones, and, you know, I think that employees will take heed to that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on the? Seeing none, rule call vote. Mr. Bakari?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaker?
Aye.
Mr. Wilford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Malone. I'd like to go ahead and go on to agenda items. Resolution fourteen oh one, amending the FY 213, 2013-14 total budget. Mr. Brown?
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is the reading of resolution fourteen dash zero one, a resolution of the City of Alachua, Florida, amending the 2014 budget, recognizing unanticipated revenue in the general fund, providing an effective date.
Good evening, Ms. Brown.
This is the resolution, reading of resolution fourteen oh one of the City of Alachua by title only.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Marcyan Brown, Finance Director. As part of its normal procedures, the Finance Department routinely performs reviews of the actual and anticipated receipts as well as expenditures for each fund and department. The purpose of this item tonight is to recognize and appropriate previously unanticipated revenue received since the adoption of the fiscal year 2014 budget. Corresponding expense accounts must be also appropriated in order to maintain a balanced budget. Breakdown of adjustment by fund is as follows. The general fund will be increased by $20,240. The city received insurance reimbursement proceeds from the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust for a $2013 charger that was totaled in an accident. The Alachua Police Department's budget will be increased by $20,240 to purchase a replacement vehicle. If approved tonight, the amended budget and amended budget total will be $34,738,387. A resolution and budget amendment are required to effect this change. Recommended action is adoption of resolution fourteen dash zero one and authorize the mayor's signature.
Commissioner, any questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to adopt resolution fourteen dash zero one, authorizing your signature as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor?
Good evening, Tamara Robbins. The amended budget that was approved was $34,687,734.
I think that's $34 million.
Oh, sorry. So if you add the 20,000, how do we come up with 34,738?
Mr. Brown, would you like to answer that? I'm not looking at the final budget before right now.
Can I just stay here? Go ahead. I just, in case. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I got to pull this up on the website. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I got to pull this up on the website, to get our approved budget total.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Well, I mean, the original budget should have been thirty-four million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-seven.
Mr. Brown, there was an amendment for the grant for the police department, right, last time?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry. The approved budget was thirty-four million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, one forty-seven, that you adopted at the second budget hearing, I believe on the twenty-third. Um, if you add the twenty thousand, two forty to that, you come up with thirty-four million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three eighty-seven.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment on the motion on the floor? A roll call vote. Commissioner Bakari?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardaker?
Aye.
Mr. Wilford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Resolution thirteen thirty-three, Turkey Creek Development of Regional Impact Amendment. Mr. Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the reading of resolution thirteen thirty-three. A resolution of the City of Alachua, Florida, regarding the Turkey Creek Development of Regional Impact, that's the DRI, amending the development order, approving, approved by resolution number eight-two dash one-five to revive, revise map H dash one by amending the land use clarification of the southerly three hundred and eighty acres, plus or minus, from residential to conservation, amending resolution number oh-seven dash zero-six by deleting paragraph A and paragraph B, repealing resolution number oh-nine dash eleven, and providing an effective date. This is the reading of resolution thirteen thirty-three of the City of Alachua, by title only.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor Ms. Brown?
And Mr. Wilford, all the rest of the commission, Madam City Attorney, Madam City Manager. My name is Brandon Stubbs. I'm a planner with the City of Alachua. The resolution before you this evening is a request by Alachua County to amend the Turkey Creek Development of Regional Impact to amend the southerly three hundred and eighty acres approximately to a conservation land use on map H one of the DRI. The county acquired the property back in December fifteen, two thousand and nine. I'm sure you're probably aware of that. It was Alachua County Forever Program. It was funds that were done by Florida Communities Trust and surtax funds. The process that this will go through is once this, or if this is approved, it will go to the state. The county will come back, apply for a future land use map amendment to the comp plan to change the actual future land use map designation to conservation, and then will come back again to apply for a rezoning to conservation as well. So, this is a three-step process. This is the first step in the process to get them underway for their San Filasco Preserve State Park, or Park.
Addition to that, right?
Yes, it's kind of addition to the State Park. So, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. The applicant is also in the audience tonight, so if you have any questions with the applicant.
Well, that's a great addition to the San Filasco. Any questions or comments?
I see where you talk about it, it doesn't change as far as daily trips and that, but as far as the DRI goes, are there any, is that going to change any thresholds or anything? I know there was, I don't think it has anything to do with housing units or that, does it? Never did?
They're actually removing, currently, the property has an established density of eight hundred dwelling units for the DRI. This will remove all eight hundred dwelling units from that, because it will be in a conservation land use. So, there will be no more residential density allowed. So, there is no net increase or impact to the DRI. It's actually exempt under Florida statute from the notice of proposed change, the NOPC process. So, we, there is a letter in there from the Department of Economic Opportunity that establishes that it is exempt from the NOPC requirements, and it does give you that exemption.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is the vehicle by which the DRI is indeed changed, and the land use on the bottom is actually changed, so that it no longer has that residential there. I mean, this is the official way. This is going back, and it is, what it's doing is it's amending the developmental order itself.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There was private ownership on that, they, someone came in and bought, actually changed the DRI on that, to lower the density on that, and did some other changes on that, and then it was changed into the Conservation Trust.
Correct. There was originally twelve hundred dwelling units that were allowed by right under the DRI. It was amended to eight hundred dwelling units, and then now, the county, since the county bought it, they are placing it in conservation for park use, for not, or passive recreation.
Any other questions or comments? What's your pleasure on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Move you adopt resolution thirteen thirty-three?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone like to comment on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, Commissioner Wilford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bakari?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. I'd like to go ahead and, item C in U.S. Software Support and Maintenance, Chief Joel Decourcy Jr.?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Madam City Manager, Madam City Attorney. This resolution is for U.S. Software Support and Maintenance. Upon approval of the city fiscal year twenty thirteen budget funds were appropriated under the contractual.
Chief, could I get you to please just get a little closer to that, thanks of?
Then, boy, did you hear me now?
Thank you, very much.
All right. Yeah, we got these spectacles on, it's kind of hard to look down at. All right, here we go. Upon approval of the city fiscal year twenty tw- thirteen budget funds were appropriated under contractual service with U.S. Software, Inc. This item in excess of, exceeds the city manager's ten thousand dollar approval threshold. So, it is being presented to the commission for final authorization. The expense has been itemized as follows. U.S. Software, Inc., October twenty oh seven, the police department began operating with the new community computer aided dispatch, which is known as CAD, a record management system, U.S. Software, Inc. The initial purchase of the software system included one year of support and maintenance, after which the department would be charged on an annual basis. U.S. Software is sole source for the license and maintenance agreement for, that are necessary for the function of current software and related computer aided dispatch, which is known as CAD system, in use at the police department. The expenses for the continuation of the annual support for the maintenance agreement in amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. There are recommended action by staff authorized chief police to execute the software support and maintenance agreement with U.S. Software, Inc. Approved expense for continuation of an annual software support and maintenance agreement for U.S. Software, Inc.
I didn't think it was that long ago. It's two thousand and seven that we did that. That's, I know we took over having to buy that, so, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we authorized, I move that we authorize the chief of police to execute the software support and maintenance agreement with USA Software Incorporated. Approved expense for continuation of annual software support and maintenance agreement with USA Software, Inc.
I'd like to second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anybody from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, Commissioner Wilford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bakari?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, Chief. Item D, purchase in excess of ten thousand dollars. Mr. Strickland?
I'm not Mr. Strickland, Mr. Mayor, but I am, these are my items for the police department.
Okay.
Joel Decourcy Jr., Chief of Police, City of Alachua. Upon approval, these items, upon approval of the city fiscal year twenty thirteen budget funds were appropriated under contractual cert, oh, sorry about that. You know, these folders all look alike. Thought I've heard that before, that's deja vu. I'm out of color code them. Here we go. The auto, this is the, in reference to the vehicle that was crashed, and the Officer Caesar and Kaiser versus the cow in the middle of the road. And this is to replace that vehicle. And we were asking for, the city was reimbursed twenty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars for the loss of the vehicle. Attaches a sale quote for one Dodge Charger, twenty thirteen, in amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, provided by the Auto National. The quote is based on price estimated in the Florida Sheriff's Association Purchasing Contract, twenty thirteen model vehicle bid, twenty-ten, oh-nine, oh-five, and twenty, correction, twelve-twenty, oh-nine, oh-five. Competitive bid contract, therefore eliminate, exempt from the quote purchase of, process for a purchase over ten thousand dollars delineated by the city purchasing guidelines. These quotes represent a base price of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, plus additional two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for V, for five-point-seven Hemi V eight. Reason is for that is the V eight is a lot more fully, fuel-efficient than the V six, reason being that once those vehicles are idled, for, in the period of time, they reduce down to a four-cylinder, therefore using less fuel. And for twenty-four dollars, disable the back rear doors to keep prisoners from getting out, that's a function that is imperative that we need. The twenty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust reimbursement represent a thousand-dollar deductible, and the two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five for the Hemi. The Alachua have, will fund additional access for the expense for the vehicle in this budget that's available, that we were able to savage a lot of the cages, it was a K nine vehicle, so therefore specialized that we, the cage, the siren, the lights, and so forth, and the computer stand, and some other equipment that were essential for that vehicle. Anyone want to go to the next one? Okay, both of them, okay, thank you. Grucon, which is G-R-U com, upon approval of the city fiscal year twenty thirteen, fourteen budget, funds are appropriate under contractual service with Gukon, Grucon. In February twenty-ten, the Alachua Police Department converted to a digital eight-hundred megahertz trunk radio system, hosted by the Gainesville Regional Utilities. Reoccurring cost operate, the Gukon system is based on a approximate charge per radio unit per month of two thousand, eight hundred, forty-three dollars and ninety-two cent. The blanket purchase order is an amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Will be established, will be issued for the year of, and billed by Grucon on a monthly basis. Recommendation approval from staff is, a recommendation from staff, approve the itemized expense budget for fiscal year fourteen, excessive ten thousand dollar threshold by the city manager. Approval under current purchasing ordinance. Authorize the city manager to approve these purchases and to issue respective purchase ordering, orders based upon the execution agreement slash contracts, state bid pricing and/or formerly bid commodities and services. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor. I move that we approve the itemized expenses budgeted for FY fourteen in excess of ten thousand dollars threshold for city manager approval, under the current purchasing ordinance to authorize city manager to approve these purchases and to issue respective purchase orders based upon executed agreements and contracts, state contract pricing and/or formerly bid commodities or services.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tamara Robbins. It was nice to hear that that eight-cylinder, that V eight kicks down to a four-cylinder when it's idling. That's very cool. The thing that I have a question on is on the G, Grucon contract, where the example that's provided is, says it's twenty-five hundred, eleven dollars and twenty-five cents per month, but here it says it's twenty-eight, forty-three, ninety-two per month. So, I'd like to know why there's that difference in totals. So, the total difference is probably, oh, I have it on my other note, somebody can do that. So, the, the example there of the monthly group bill is twenty-five, eleven, twenty-five, but here it states that it's per radio unit of twenty-eight, forty-three, ninety-two? Why, why is that different than what is provided as a support document? I don't, I don't get it.
Uh, go ahead. You do have twenty-eight, thirty-fourty-three, oh-two, ninety-two as, you know, reoccurring. And I'm, I, I, I'm not, I'm not looking at, right now, I'm not looking at what you're talking about.
Okay. We can, we only approximate, we can't say exactly what Grucon's going to cost. So, what we do is kind of estimate on the high end, so therefore, we'll be able to cover the costs, depending on the, sometime the radios, when we first got it, they were estimated at one rate, and by the users, they reduced that amount, so therefore, we save money. But we caution on the high end.
So, we're talking about a three hundred dollar difference per month? Approximately, I, I didn't. Do you have any comment on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, the authorization is for a blanket purchase order for the amount, so what is not used off that purchase order would, would, you know, be left over, so it's not an exact. not an exact amount, it is a blanket purchase order that we're, we're asking for authorization for.
Yeah.
Because it's an estimated cost.
Yeah, well, when we initially got the system, we were, it was estimated at one rate, but we received another rate because of the usage. Sheriff's Office uses it, Gainesville Police Department uses it, and the High Springs Police Department was using it. So, they go by users, the fire rescue also uses it. So, how many were users, the users they have on the system determines what the cost is going to be. So, we try to estimate to, not to the penny, but to try to be in the ballpark.
Go ahead.
Well, it says contractual services, so either, I don't understand, but generally when there's a contract involved, you have an, there's an agreement there of what services they're providing, and then what cost is being charged, and how much you agree to pay for those services. So, I don't understand why we're estimating when we, apparently it's a contractual service that we have, why it wouldn't be clearly stated in the contract how much we're being
Unfortunately, law enforcement, there are some services that are provided in vendors such as Grucon, just like, I guess, anything else. It determines on the fuel cost and whatever usage, and again, the use, the users on the system basically determines the cost per radio.
And it does say right here, I mean, it says the system is based on approximate charge per radio per month, approximate charge per radio per month of 284392.
And sometimes we get, we were able to save some costs, Sergeant Newsom spearheaded that, and we were able to save some money and get additional radio based on the usage from the Sheriff's Office and other agencies.
And as it said, the blanket purchase order is, is the amount of? Commissioner Bakari?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaker?
Aye.
Mr. Wilford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E, recommended approval of police FOP and City of Alachua 2013/14 Collective Bargaining Agreement. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, City Manager, City Attorney. I'm Cap Wilson with City Staff. Got the frog in my throat again tonight. I'm here with pleasure to present to you the negotiated agreement between the City of Alachua and the FOP, Federal Order for Police, and the Alachua Police Department Bargaining Unit. We held sessions right here in these chambers that were publicly noticed and publicly held on the 19th of September, the 30th of September, on the 7th of October, and then on the 10th of October. And of course, there was communication proposals and counter proposals sent back and forth in between all those meetings. The agreement that we reached on the 13th was presented to the membership on 10/13 over the weekend, and it was approved by a very strong overwhelming positive vote. There are very few changes really to the contract from the last fiscal year. As I'm sure you all can imagine, we started out with the 3% across-the-board pay increase, which was something that was accomplished through the city manager and the work of staff that really put everything on the table to try to enhance the police department and officers' and communication operators' compensation. We did discuss other, other issues, three that were submitted by the FOP that were subsequently withdrawn through negotiations. Article nine is a bulletin board, we agreed to create and interun that portal for notices and communications back and forth between the membership and the city. Article 13 really is just a, another area where timeframes are included, and we agreed that we would give 30 days notice before we would offer any proposed changes to City of Alachua General Personnel Policies and Procedures as opposed to the pre-existing 14 days. Article 17 is the Educational Assistance Program. We discussed that at great length, and we adopted the language set forth in the Policy and Procedure Manual as, as contract language as opposed to language that was different. We did move forward in agreement there with a test run again to re-implement the college education support for officers and bargaining unit members, but it is capped at $4,000. We knew that we couldn't just offer everyone $1,000. We capped it individually at a thousand and four thousand total. In addition to that, we looked at the leave policies that's set forth in the contract, and we realized that we were having a little bit of a problem with officers, and we're fortunate that we have many who have been here for a considerable period of time, and they were bumping up against the 240-hour maximum carry forward of vacation time, and were in danger of losing some of those earned days. So, we compromised and agreed to extend for this one year only, that time by an extra two 12-hour shifts to 264 hours. But in addition to that, we changed the language through negotiation of the leave policy, and it requires that the membership, the employees submit between November 1st and December 31st of every year their vacation leave request for the coming year. That way, the department will be better able to schedule and make certain that officers and communication operators receive their time off, which of course is important, and not have to allow it to accrue to the extent that they may be in danger of losing some time. So, even though we extended it this year, we're confident that that time will be brought down to the 240-hour maximum, and that no one will lose time or have to take advantage of the one-year extension of the maximum benefit. Article 26, of course, is the wage hours terms and condition of employment provision, and that includes the 3% across-the-board increase that this commission had budgeted. So, other than that, there are no changes to the agreement, and we, as staff, and based on ratification of the contract by the bargaining unit, recommend to this commission that the contract be approved and adopted, and the mayor and city manager be authorized to sign the agreement.
I see you got pretty good grades, you get 100% funding too.
Well, we've.
An A.
We, you get, no, you can, you can get 100% in an A, and I think it's 80% for a B, and then it goes down, but you don't get reimbursement for anything at lower than a C.
Right.
And this is reimbursement, it's not money paid upfront, so there has to be proof that the course was taken and passed with a C or above before the graduated reimbursement takes place.
Comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to move that we approve the 2013-2014 APD slash FOP City of Alachua Collective Bargaining Agreement negotiated and recommended by staff, and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement approved and ratified by the bargaining unit by vote held October 13, 2013.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, Commissioner Bakari?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardaker?
Aye.
Mr. Wilford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'd like to go to round two of comments from citizens subject of choice. If you didn't have a chance at the beginning and you'd like to now, please do.
Good evening, Carol Thomas, City of Alachua. I couldn't hear anything tonight, and I've had, this is the third set that I was given of these to try out, and they don't work. So, I don't know if it's up here or it's in here. The other thing I want to ask, what happened to the screens on the side? What happened to the screens on the side of the wall?
Well, if there's no presentation, then there is no need for having the screens down.
But you took them down? I mean, you're not going to have any.
No, they, they go up in the, in the ceiling.
Oh, okay. I just wondered, I thought, who is? Maybe you had so many computers, you didn't need them anymore, and we would, we would need our computers.
I know, it's, it's a nice aesthetic look.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Speaking of aesthetics, Connie Kenny, and I say good evening to everyone. I think it was two or three years ago, I made some comments about the city website that, you know, I thought it really needed some work, and I sent some, I think, city manager encouraged me to send some examples, which I did. I see that it really does need a facelift, and if you, now that you've all got computers, I've done this myself, and maybe it's not something you can do except when you're home, but Google at least four or five different little towns or cities, and see what their website looks like, and see if you can come up with one that is as bland and uninteresting as ours, you know? It's not, it's not going to be easy to do. My little town up in Maine, it's only 3,000 and some odd people. Google Alfred, Maine, and go to the website, and they have these pictures, and this, it's colorful. It, it's really interesting to see how many of the websites are really exciting, vibrant, and you want, you know, like the gateway to the city, you want billboards to tell people to come and see Alachua. Your website doesn't do anything for that. But the website's really, really important. You can go on a city website and look at it and say, wow, I really would like to go there, because they tell you everything about their cultural activities, you can go and look at their government, their committees, you can read some of their reports. I mean, I'm just encouraging you to do that, because, I mean, we've got a real sorry website. I don't mean to, you know, offend anyone, but it's the same as it was when I criticized it before, so I don't feel that I've, you know, trampled on anybody's feelings or anything, but go and look at it. I mean, you've got, you've got the opportunity now, you can all go and try at least four or five different little towns or villages or cities and check them out.
I have, and I agree with you, it's bland.
It's not only that, but it's outdated, there's a lot of things on there that should be taken off and new things put on. And you've got a tech person, I believe, but, you know, if you need one, you know, I'm around, I'll fly.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If you didn't get a chance at the beginning, you'd like to now.
Good evening, Tamara Robbins, she'd be good too. I was asked to read this into the record. It is dated Monday, October 21st, 2013, from Jane Hendricks Esquire. Good evening, Commissioners, I am tied up at a meeting in Turkey Creek with numerous homeowners and Mark Rogers, Communications Director for Energy Management, Inc., and owner of the Greck Biomass Plant. He will be hearing our ongoing complaints as to the noise emanating from the biomass plant. I have asked that my statement be read into the record in case I cannot get to the meeting prior to adjournment. I clearly heard the plant last night during my walk in and around Creekside Village, a subdivision within Turkey Creek. I also heard the plant prior to retiring at 10:30 PM, October 20th, 2013. According to incident reports sent to me, there were three incidences of homeowners awakened after midnight, specifically one, specifically one, at 12:52 AM, October 21st, 2013, incident number 13013846, another at 3 o'clock AM, October 21st, 2013, incident number 13013866, and another at 1:45 AM, reported later in the day, October 21st, 2013, incident number 13013887. Not everyone is reporting to me their sleep disturbances and calls to Alachua Police Department. It was roaring when I was awakened at 5:30 AM. By this letter, I'm advising you that the biomass noise problem persists and is unrelenting. Please make every valiant effort on behalf of your citizens to make this stop. Sincerely, Jane Hendricks Esquire. And I'd like to take an opportunity to address the format of the agenda. I was on the commission when the whole rules and procedures of this commission predates anybody else up there, I think, except probably the mayor. And on item number three, where it has committee reports, committee appointments, and city announcements, there is very rarely anything scheduled. All of you are appointed to serve on a committee outside of this job description right here. Either it's the Regional Planning Council, League of Cities, I can't find on the website anywhere, another issue with the website. The committees that you were all assigned to and the minutes for that meeting are missing, there's a whole block of missing minutes. And this is, this is the opportunity, and was the intent of creating of this item number three slot, is for you to give a report on your experiences in those other job tasks that you were appointed to do, so that we know what's going on. The Regional Planning Council is very important, I don't know who the rep is, but that is how we know what is going on in the region as far as big comp plan amendments and stuff where you might come back and say, hey, we need to pay attention to this, it's coming down the chute, it's over there in that county, but we need to pay attention. There's also committees within the City of Alachua, the Rec Committee, the Youth Advisory Council, the Senior Advisory Council, and these committees, and I think that when they meet, they should, the chair should come here and give a presentation, so that we know what is going on in these committees. They don't meet every month, but when they do, schedule them for an update. City announcements, are there no city announcements? You guys wait until the end where you do commission comments, which, why not at the meeting, at the beginning, when there's a slot for it, and there are people here? I don't think everybody should have to wait till the end of the meeting to have you give an announcement. There are should-be announcements, and that's where I think it should be. And when I was looking at the committees that are in the city, there's the Charter Review Committee, that hasn't met for two years. It's a standing committee, supposed to meet at least every, once every three months, it hasn't met, the last minutes were dated in 2011. I mean, I know why that committee was formed, it was to get a charter amendment so Tracy wouldn't have to move into Alachua to be city manager, I know why that happened. And I see you rolling your heads, but the committee hasn't met since then. And it's a standing committee, has everybody listed, everybody's terms expired, the last one was sometime here in 2013, so why isn't it meeting anymore? So, that's, that's on my mind, and thank you for your time this evening.
Anyone else? Did you get a chance at the beginning, you'd like to now? Madam City Attorney?
Geez. I'll address Ms. Kenny's comments first. Ms. Kenny, we are working on a new website, staff is working on it, and it, we should roll it out in the next few months. I don't know exactly when it's going to roll out, but we agree with you, and don't take that as criticism, that it definitely needs some work, so appreciate your comments on that, and we will work on that. Also wanted to update the commission, City of Alachua organized a meeting last week with the, the county, the City of Gainesville, the GRU, the sheriff, Gainesville Police Department, and our police department to discuss the concerns and citizen complaints regarding the Greck facility. We met in Gainesville to try to establish some roles and responsibilities, and have all of us kind of come together as a unified body. We addressed many of the concerns, there will be a press release that will be coming out from all of us together collectively, and we plan on meeting again very soon. Different ones had different roles, that they were supposed to go back and find out some, some different information, and then we'll get that information out to the citizens, so I just wanted to let you know that we are working and also. I just wanted to let you know that we are working, and also working with the other public entities to try to come up with some solutions and try to, try to help the citizens with their concerns. And I'm not going to comment on the charter.
Could I please ask for your courtesy?
That's all.
No comments.
No comment? Mr. Bakari?
I want to thank Ms. Robbins for reading the email, I got it this evening, and I was going to read it if she did not, I appreciate her doing so, saved me some time. The, I wanted to address the website thing, because I think I probably complained more than Ms. Canny, really, I've heard you do it here, but I know I've talked about it for a long time, maybe not in this forum, because we do have an office and have the opportunity to meet the City Manager, and, you know, sometimes it's unfortunate, maybe, I wouldn't say unfortunately, there's other items that are kind of more important, and I think, I'll say that we may be short-staffed in some areas, and we could go out and pay for somebody to do a website, but I know they've been working hard on it, it's been a while, I see the same thing you do, and I've looked at Mountain Doors' website, Ocala's website, Xavier Jacksonville's website, and there was another one, I really looked at, and they're really, really nice, and I think we're headed that way, I've heard, and we've got some videos now up there, and some stuff happening, I look forward to that. Let's see. The last week, I attended a meeting over in Turkey Creek, and it felt was a very good meeting, it was a very positive meeting, and I know that it looks like Greck's working on some things, I think we've all seen the emails, they're working on to take care of some things with the sound, the sound issue. And I've asked Albert Morales from Greck if he'd be interested in a couple of weeks possibly doing a presentation before this Commission, and giving the citizens the opportunity to attend, to watch a, a presentation that explains what they're doing to mitigate the problems, and just wanted to kind of bring that to y'all's attention, so, thank you.
Mr. Hardaker? No comment. Mr. Wilford?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I attended, as I always do, unless something comes up, the Turkey Creek Master Owners Association's Board Directors Meeting last week, and also they had a workshop before, and they did address a lot of the issues and some concerns about what we're doing as the City Commission, and I told them that certain things have been done, and that we had written the official letter, and that we were certainly going to look into some things. It was, usually I might bother, it was horrendous this morning at five-thirty. It's the worst sound I have heard on this whole thing since I've been there, so I can say this time it personally affected me, but I happened to be up, so I wasn't asleep, so it didn't, it didn't wake me up, because I was already going out to get the paper, but I can see how, I could hear it in the house, so it was very loud. And, Mr. Mayor, may I ask the City Attorney a question?
Sure.
Last meeting, I mentioned something about not suing, but looking into if there's anything, have you had a chance to do that?
Yes, just a second. The question that was asked was had regard to the, whether or not there was a viability trying to sue for violation of a comp plan. We pulled the comp plans from City of Gainesville, City of Alachua, and also went through some other correspondence. I mean, there's no doubt that the city was on actual notice of what was going on, there was also some intergovernmental communication by the North Florida Regional Planning Council that had gone around. It's my personal opinion, I do not believe that the city would, that anyone would actually win for fail, win a lawsuit saying that, you know, you've got to stop them or turn it down because you didn't comply with your comp plan, because there was communication, I believe there was even a presentation in front of this Commission. So, the answer to your question is yes, I did look at it, I did look at the comp plan provisions in both the City of Gainesville and in the City of Alachua. Winburne and I both sat down and looked at that, and I don't think that's going to be a viable avenue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I appreciate you looking into that, because, as I told the group at the Turkey Creek Master Owners Association, you know, for us to start submitting suits from the city, and I said I couldn't speak for the city, but in essence, there is a provision, I guess, if we filed suit and we were wrong, and they were shut down for X amount of days, and they could recoup calls from us, that, you know, the city certainly would be bankrupt if that ever happened, and I didn't know if we, one, I don't know how much standing we have, but we, I certainly appreciate you looking into comp plan issue, because that was my main concern, looking into comp plan. I do say that, and I may be the only one up here that thinks we need to look at this, but there, the noise ordinance the City of Gainesville has, and the county has, there is a provision in there that talks, get away from decimals, you just have an ordinance that talks about the sound, because I don't want to start getting into testing equipment, because that's sixty-six decimals at night, and, I'm sorry, in the daytime, sixty decimals at night, that's, that's an arbitrary figure, but I really believe this city needs to have, taking consideration based on what's happened here, that in the future, there may be other industries that come in that needs to adhere to a noise ordinance, and if we don't have one, we'd never be able to enforce if they were doing those things, so I don't know how we want to go about that, I certainly can't make a motion during these comments, but I really think, you know, staff, if they wouldn't mind researching possibility, just a, a simple noise ordinance that doesn't start talking about decimal levels, because I think the county has a pretty good one, that talks about the reasonable person, blah, 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 and I think that may be something we won't consider for the future, so. My last comment is, at the Turkey Creek Master Owners Association Board of Directors Meeting, there was very, very, very complimentary of our, complimentary, compliment, is it getting late? Complimentary of our Alachua Police Department, they said they have been just real troopers about this noise issue, that they have taken complaints and are keeping track of them, and one, Sarah Beavers and the, and the Chair, Tim Stanton, when we passed on to the Chief and his staff, that they are just very, very impressed that not only in those situations they did catch somebody, they got mugged, and called the people that mugged it real quick, so there's quick response, so, so they want me to pass on to, in front of the Commission, as matter of public record, that the residents of Turkey Creek certainly admire and appreciate the support we get from the Alachua County Police Department. So, Chief, thank you very much. That's all, have Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor? Are you hearing any better? Is that better?
It's better.
But still not?
I leaned real close into my microphone, because I was watching.
Okay.
These don't work.
Okay.
This was the third set.
Oh, dear. All right, I'll try to talk real loud, so you can hear. Okay, all right, thank you for bringing up the website. I had a family from Tallahassee interested in moving here, and I told them to check out the website, and they called me back and said, well, you know, there's not much there. I said, we're working on it, so that's, thank you for reminding us of that. I want to thank the staff for initiating the meeting and collaborating with the other official agencies, that's a great move, and let's keep that moving. I brought greetings at Gussie Lee's Church, they had our eighty-first association conference, it was great to be out there with the Chief, and Sheriff Sadie Darnell and other dignitaries were there, so that was great, and, you know, Gussie's always very, very hospitable. And the last comment is, I was doing my judging duty and met a family from South Florida downtown by Conestogas, and they complimented us on a wonderful city here in Alachua, they said they always stop here and eat, and they gave us a great, great accolades, and love the scarecrows. So, that was a positive note, so thank you.
No comment from me either.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All, all favor say aye.
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 Aye.